Let me get started, everyone. Okay. The notice requirement provided for the open public meetings law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given, said notice having been transmitted to the Courier News. What's, what's that date again, clerk? I'm just looking at the date.
Oh, January 12th, 2021.
As well as posting on the city's website. Clerk, can I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Davis.
President.
McKenna. Can't hear you. Councilman McKenna?
Present.
Councilman McCray?
Present.
Councilwoman Mills-Ransom?
Present.
Councilwoman Welch?
Present.
Vice President Good?
Present.
Council President Hockaday?
Present.
We have all members present and accord.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented? We're talking about the April 12th, 2021 minutes.
Both.
Second.
In favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppositions or abstentions? Okay, the minutes are approved. All right, we'll first move to discussion of public hearing, second reading, and final passage. Clerk, would you please read bond 1273 by title and further certify that the ordinance is complied with all statutory publication requirements?
Bond Ordinance 1273 is an ordinance providing for various 2021 capital acquisitions and improvements by and in the city of Plainfield and the county of Union, state of New Jersey, appropriating 6,904,222 thereof, and authorizing the issuance of 5,719,000 bonds or notes to the city to finance part of the cost thereof. It is hereby certified that notice of the public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on April 20th, 2021.
Okay, the floor is now open to any member of the public that would like to speak on this ordinance. As customary, hit the hand icon to be heard. Give your name and address for the record, and the floor will be yours. Let's see supporters there, anyone with their hands raised?
Nope, there's no one with their hand raised at this time.
Okay, may I have a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance?
Both.
Second.
You may have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
McKenna? Can't hear you, Councilman McKenna?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
Vice President Good?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
That unanimous, this bond ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Okay, clerk, please read bond 1274 by title.
Bond 1274 is a bond ordinance providing for various 2021 acquisitions and improvements by and for the parking utility of the city of Plainfield and the county of Union, state of New Jersey, appropriating 714,000 thereof, and authorizing the issuance of 680,000 bonds or notes to the city to finance part of the cost thereof. It is hereby certified that notice of the public hearing on this bond ordinance was published in the Courier News on April 20th, 2021.
Thank you. The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance.
No one with their hand raised.
Thank you. We have a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance?
Don't move.
Second.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
McKenna? I'm having trouble hearing you, Councilman McKenna.
No.
No. Councilman McCray?
Yes.
Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
Vice President Good?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed, this bond ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Clerk, please read MC 2021-15.
MC 2021-15 is an ordinance creating Chapter 9, Article 24, titled Motorized Sports Bikes and Related Activities. It is hereby certified that notice of the public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on April 20th, 2021.
Floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance.
No one.
Okay, the floor may have a motion to close.
Move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
McKenna? McKenna?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
Vice President Good?
Absolutely, yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
This ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Thank you. Clerk, read MC 2021-16.
MC 2021-16 is an ordinance of the city of Plainfield and the county of Union authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with PL 836 Plainfield Urban Renewal LLC, granting a pilot with respect to certain properties identified on the city's tax map as Block 836, Lot 1, 8 through 14, and 5.01 on the official tax map of the city of Plainfield. It's hereby certified that the notice of the public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on April 20th, 2021.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance.
No one.
Okay, may I have a motion and a second to close public hearing on this ordinance?
Don't move.
Second.
I may have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage.
Moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
Councilman McKenna?
No.
Councilman McCray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welch?
Yes.
Vice President Good?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed, this ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Clerk, proceed with MC 2021-17.
MC 2021-17 is an ordinance of the city of Plainfield and the county of Union authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with PL 611 Front Plainfield Urban Renewal LLC and granting a pilot with respect certain properties identified on the city's tax map as Block 233, Lots 2, 7, and 12, and identified in the city's tax records respectively as 611 through 19 West Front Street and 111, 118 through 120 Plainfield Avenue and 115 through 33 Wayne Wood Park. It is hereby certified that the notice of the public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on April 20th, 2021.
Floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance.
No one.
Okay, may I have a motion and a second to close public hearing?
Don't move.
Second.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
Councilman McKenna? I didn't get that vote, Councilman McKenna.
No.
No. Councilman McCray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welch?
Yes.
Vice President Good?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed, this ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Thank you. Clerk, proceed with MC 2021-18.
MC 2021-18 is an ordinance of the city of Plainfield, county of Union, state of New Jersey, adopting the amended TODN South Avenue Redevelopment Plan dated March 4th, 2021. It is hereby certified that the notice of the public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on April 20th, 2021.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance specifically.
No one.
May I have a motion and a second to close public hearing on this ordinance?
Don't move.
Second.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage?
So moved. Second.
Clerk, roll call.
Councilwoman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman McKenna?
No.
Councilman McCray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welch?
Yes.
Vice President Good?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed, this ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Okay. All right, we'll now move to public comments, limited resolutions, motions, and ordinances to be considered this evening. So the 30 minutes has been allocated for the same. You wish to be heard, hit the hand icon. You'll be recognized, give your name and address for the record, and given three minutes. Floor is now open.
Also, if you dialed in by phone, it will be star nine to use the hand raise option.
Thank you.
Good evening, Timothy Priano, 1405 Martine Avenue. I am objecting to R. 7021, the adoption of the budget for 2021. First and foremost, we have seen our budgets rise almost a million dollars every year for the last four years. We are not being due diligent and seeing if our money's being well spent. You all, the council, five members of the council approved R. 09221 in February to Mercury Public Affairs LLC. I requested on Oprah to see the facts of what we've spent this money's on. I've also requested on what our monies are being spent for communication and technology, and none of these requests have come through. The question is, how do we keep spending if no one's checking up on the numbers being spent, and if we're getting the proper data? I find Mercury, I asked it in February, questioned it. I am shocked to find out that they are also, and I don't know if this is a conflict of interest or a lack of ethics on our part, but we are doing business with one company called Mercury that you've all approved. And I'm also seeing that the mayoral candidate for the city of Plainfield is using this as a PR group, sending out messages for his reelection campaign. Now, these are simple requests from Oprah to have this information publicly seen by the public. Now, if we are using and mixing our two different accounts or supporting people, we should have the rights to know how much money is being spent of city tax dollars and how much the mayor is using it for his reelection campaign. I've received three or four notices from Mercury Public Affairs since February that this has been happening, that we are using this public relation firm to represent the mayor's reelection campaign. Now, the five who voted for this, you should be asking where this money being spent, since you're supposed to be representing the city. Two council people questioned it in February why we were spending additional $60,000 for a resolution. We brought in somebody from Georgia trying to pitch us on this thing, and no one is asking the question, where is money being spent in communications or on this thing? I find this ludicrous, that residents cannot find the facts and that we are mixing business with other things throughout the city. This needs to be addressed. People need to know where the money's being spent on all counts and not just writing a blank check of our taxpaying dollars. Thank you.
And thank you as well, always, Mr. Priano.
Currently, there's no one else with their hand up.
I'll accept the motion and a second to close public comment on resolution.
Second.
You all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, public comment is now closed. Okay, are there any questions on Resolutions 161-21 through 166-21?
I don't have any questions, but I have a comment, Council President.
Go right ahead.
So, some of these resolutions this month were actually very near and dear to my heart. So I want to first thank you, Council President, for allowing these to go on the agenda. Last week was a really tough week for a lot of residents in Plainfield, especially residents who are about my age. We lost three young men last week. They were star athletes, they were good citizens of the city. If you got to know them, they were joys to know. So to see a resolution extended, extending condolences to the family of DeJohn Allen Jordan just means a lot to me. Not only was he an athlete and a Plainfield resident, he also was a former employee of the city of Plainfield. He worked in the Division of Parks and Recreation for our summer food nutrition program, and anybody who got to know him just knew that he was a joy and a light, and I'm glad that I was able to get to know him. Also, recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month, to deal with such tragedy in such a short time, I just want the residents of Plainfield to know that they are not alone in their feelings of sadness and grief. I also agree with them, but also they don't have to suffer in silence. And hopefully with May being Mental Health Awareness Month, if the Department of Health and Social Services could kind of, you know, help share some resources for people who may be battling mental illness or need someone to talk to, I think that would be a great compliment to this resolution. So once again, thank you for putting these on here, as well as the new agenda item that's later on in the meeting, extending our condolences to the family of Michael Price. I know that these, while they don't bring back their loved ones, it does help with bringing a sense of comfort, knowing that this is now a part of the permanent record for the city of Plainfield, so thank you.
Thank you, I couldn't agree more. You know, it was a very difficult week for the city. Many of us are still reeling and will be reeling for quite some time, so it's very appropriate that we do this as a body, and I'm happy to inscribe their names in our permanent record. Any other questions or comments regarding? All right, do we have a motion?
I have actually just one comment, Council President. And that is about R. 162-21, which is an appointment to the Housing Authority. You know, we have this advice and consent ability as a body, but we don't ever interview these individuals or request their, expect their resumes, of which we have neither. So I think, you know, once again, we're failing to do our jobs without asking these individuals that we appoint to these commissions questions and getting an understanding for what it is they've done, if they are being renominated, or what they are observing and would like to do if they're new nominees, so I just want to put that in the record.
Council President?
Go right ahead, Councilmember.
Viola Barco is a upstanding pillar in our community, and let me just reiterate that R. 162-21 is saying the reappointment of Viola Barco. Longtime resident, been serving as a commissioner for a very long time. And we respect her opinions and we respect her standards as she continues to work on the housing commission, so I just wanted to make that comment. Being a liaison from the council on the committee for the Housing Authority.
Council President, I'd just like to make one other comment, is that I don't doubt that Ms. Barco is a wonderful person and a great addition on the Housing Authority Commissioners, Board of Commissioners. But she was appointed some time ago and is being reappointed, and there should be a process where we ask questions of her observations and what she would like to achieve, and what she has tried to achieve, and where she thinks there are issues. This is a very important area within our community, and there's a lot of chatter about it, and I think that we should have conversations about this, and I don't think we should be so afraid to have these conversations. I'm sure she's a lovely person, and there's no attack on her personally, but there's no resume, and we don't have any conversation with her, so that's my point. Thank you.
Council President, if I may?
You may.
I just want to, while I understand Councilman McKenna's point about having resumes for people who we are pointing to the various boards and commissions on here, I think it's important to note that Ms. Barco is a resident of the Plainfield Housing Authority. So I think that she brings that knowledge and that experience with her in being a part of that board. She also, I've had the opportunity of meeting her. She also is very enthusiastic about wanting to be on this board. So I'm just going to publicly voice my support for her before the vote. I think she's a great addition to the board. She brings the experience of a resident, as well as a wealth of knowledge, having lived there for as long as she has. And she also brings an enthusiasm, and so her really wanting to be there means that she's going to put great input in there. But I do understand Councilman McKenna's request for resumes, and I think that's especially important when we have new council members who may not know the people who are coming to the board. So I understand his point. I think that Ms. Barco is a great addition to the Housing Authority, and I absolutely think that she should be reappointed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other questions or comments from other council members? I appreciate your comments, and all right. So may we have a motion in a second?
Moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppositions or abstentions?
No.
You want to say no to a specific one, 162?
Yes, I'm going to say no to 162, and again, not any reference on the individual, just that I don't.
We got it, understood. All right. So, just note, Councilman McKenna's no vote on 162, and yes to.
Yep, duly noted.
All right, 162, please.
So we'll move on to Resolution 167. Resolution granting advice and consent to the appointments of the Plainfield Cultural and Heritage Commission.
Questions from council members?
Same, same comment as before.
Gotcha. Anyone else?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
So, Mr. Clerk, on this, it checks off that a resume is attached. Was a resume in fact attached, or this is everything that was submitted?
That was everything that was submitted into the system.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional questions, comments? Okay, do we have a motion in a second?
Moved. Second.
And roll call.
Councilmembers Davis?
No.
McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
Vice President Good?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Five in favor, two opposed, resolution passes?
Okay, 168, please.
Resolution 168-21, authorizing approval to engage Troy and Bank to audit the city's electric, gas, telecommunications, and water bills.
Scanning the screen for questions from council members.
I have a question.
Okay, Councilman McKenna?
So my understanding, the way I read the contract with this vendor is that if they find no savings, they make no money. If they find, I think it's what, 30, 33%, 30%, something like that, of savings, then they get that percentage. Is there a reason we're not able to do this in-house with our finance team?
Yeah, we're. Utility bills are a fairly, you know, tough thing to know and understand, particularly all of the line-ons. You know, when you start talking about what should the usage charges be, whether it's water, gas, and electric, and in particular with regard to telecommunications, where they have things like universal service order codes and lots of other information that very few people in the city of Plainfield have. You know, so it just doesn't make sense to do it, and it costs us nothing to get this additional resource to try to find, you know, inaccurate and/or incorrect bills.
I agree with that. Do you have a guess at it on what kind of savings they might find? Because I'm sure they took a look at some bills before they put their proposal in.
No, no, I don't. We've done this before and didn't necessarily detect anything. I would tell you the more likely area is in the area of telecommunications. You know, when you start looking at the Verizon bills and AT&amp;T and things of that sort, there tends to be a greater opportunity. But no, I don't have a number in mind. I just thought it made good sense from the perspective of due diligence to go ahead and do it. And if we find things, we're ahead of the game. If we don't, nothing ventured, nothing gained.
I agree. Thank you very much.
Further questions? Okay, do we have a motion in a second?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppositions or abstentions? Okay, approved.
Council President, before we move to the next couple of resolutions, do you mind if I just say one word? Well, it's more than one word, but a couple of sentences. I just, is that okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I just wanted to, this is my first year working with the CBAC, and I just wanted to acknowledge the hard work that they put into this and thank them on behalf of the mayor, on behalf of the entire administration. I am beyond impressed at their willingness to jump into a volunteer position and all the learning that it takes to understand a municipal budget, plus all of the municipal regulations that we have. It's difficult to understand on a good day, and for someone coming from outside of government to, out of their goodness of their heart, decide to help us with this process, take a look at our budget, spend their time and energy away from what they could be doing to do this is a wonderful civic duty. I'm so impressed with their commitment, with their desire to help their community, and I just wanted to say a sincere thank you to them for, you know, for all their hard work, all their efforts. We take their recommendations very seriously. The Director of Finance and I have already met about their recommendations. Many, most of them, we are going to see how we can incorporate as soon as possible, and just a sincere thank you. And just a, just a sincere thank you and salute to them for, for taking this on.
Thank you.
That's all.
Council President, with, with your permission, I was told by our finance director that we have to adopt. One seventy-one and one seventy-two prior to amending the budget and adopting the budget. So with your permission, if we can move to one seventy-one and one seventy-two and then go to the budget amendment?
Let's do it.
Resolution one seventy-one twenty-one, authorizing the use of a three-year average for the calculation of parking utility anticipated revenues.
Okay, any questions from council members? Do we have a motion in a second?
No move.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition or abstentions? Not noted, this resolution is approved.
Resolution one seventy-two twenty-one, authorizing the use of a three-year average for the calculation of uniform construction code anticipated revenues.
Any questions from council members? Do we have a motion in a second?
No move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppositions or abstentions? The resolution is approved.
Okay, we now move to resolution one sixty-nine twenty-one, authorizing approval to amend. The twenty twenty-one Plainfield Municipal Budget. And prior to the motion and second, I have to read. The amendments into the record. Resolution authorizing amendments to the twenty twenty-one budget for an increase of two hundred eighty-seven thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars ninety-two cents. General appropriations, public and private program offset by revenue. Comcast PEG Technology Grant from zero dollars to five thousand. Kids Recreation Trust Grant from zero dollars to ninety thousand dollars. Union County Infrastructure Grant from zero dollars to one hundred forty-five thousand dollars. Pedestrian Safety Grant from zero dollars to fifteen thousand dollars. Distracting driver, driving grant from zero dollars to nine thousand dollars. NJACCHO Supplemental Award from zero dollars to five thousand twenty-six sixty-seven. Municipal Alliance Program from zero dollars to fifteen thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars twenty-five cents. Municipal Alliance Program Match Community Service Block Grant from zero dollars to three thousand nine hundred ninety-one dollars and thirty-one cents. Community Service Block Grant Program, twenty twenty additional award from zero dollars to two thousand one hundred fifty-seven dollars. Matching Funds Grant from eighty-three thousand three hundred fifty-three to seventy-nine thousand three hundred sixty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents. Total appropriations from eighty-six thousand five hundred fifteen, four four two fifty-nine to eighty-six thousand eight oh two, five ninety-one fifty-one. Be it further resolved that two copies of this resolution be filed forthwith. In the Office of Director of Local Government Services for the certification of the twenty twenty-one local budget, so amended.
Okay, what questions do we have from council members?
I just have one question. Were these amendments added because we just received the grants?
Yes.
Thank you.
Scanning the screen for additional questions or comments. Okay, do we have a motion in a second?
No move. Second.
Okay, clerk, can I have a roll call?
Are you gonna unmute AJ?
I thought I was the one that couldn't hear you. Councilman Davis. McKenna?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
Vice President Good?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
This resolution to amend has been adopted. Resolution one seventy twenty-one, authorizing the adoption of the twenty twenty-one Plainfield Municipal Budget.
Scanning the screen for questions or comments from council members.
I have a comment, two comments actually. One is that I, I would like to echo BA Levinson's comments about the CBAC team. Cause it is, it is kind of like drinking from a fire hose when you join the, the CBAC. I was on the CBAC four years, four or five years ago and learned a lot. Curiously, in the last four years, some of the same topics come up in the CBAC reports. I think that one thing we need to consider going forward is that we give. The time and weight to the CBAC report. And by that, I mean that when our budget recommendations are due at noon. Getting the CBAC report an hour before does not give it much weight. So that would be my suggestion going forward is that we not cram it into such a tight timeline. That we don't even get to review the CBAC and consider it into our recommendations. And my second point is that my recommendation was a broad one for the administration and gave them a lot of leeway. And that was that they find another million dollars to cut that was not in recreation or public safety. That was not considered apparently, but I think it's important for us to position ourselves for next year and what we're going to be facing. After the, everything flushes out with the pandemic results and the economy, et cetera, which appears to be softening a little bit. So those are my two comments. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments from council colleagues?
Council President. As, as Chair of the Finance Committee, I'd like to say thank you to every CBAC member that was there. Echoing what the BA has said and reassuring everyone that all recommendations were taken into consideration. And given extensive thought and consideration. And those that merited. Moving forward with, as the BA said, we will be taking those things seriously, considering them. And figuring out a way that we can address the recommendations from the CBAC. So thank you for all your hard work. And as been said before, before I became a councilman, I was a CBAC member and also Chair of the CBAC for three consecutive years. So thank you. I understand your pain and I understand the joy that it brings knowing that you contributed. To the progress of the city.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Good.
As a member of the Chair for this year of the budget. I would like to echo the same thing that the Chair and, and of course, as the BA Levinson so eloquently put it. A phenomenal job from the CBAC Committee this year. This is probably my fourth, fourth time being on the, the Budget Committee. And they did a phenomenal job. They, they were just went beyond, beyond. And, and we're grateful that we had this bunch for this particular budget. And of course, our Chair and, and of course you, Council President, as always, we do our best. We're not perfect, but at the end of the day, we're about plainfield business and doing the best that we can. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Alright. I'd just like to echo those comments as well. And the CBAC did a phenomenal job. I thought the CBAC report was as good as I've ever seen it. I thought it was well thought out. I thought it had some really good recommendations that I know in speaking with administration officials. That they've already begun to see how they can be implemented. So it's just a really good thing. I think it really bodes well for us involving the community in this process, getting some additional eyes and ears on our budget. You know, all with the goal to make our city better. So with that, do we have a motion and a second to adopt the?
No move. Second.
Okay, clerk, can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
Vice President Good?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed, the budget has been adopted. And we'll move to one seventy-three twenty-one, authorizing approval to cancel twenty-one, twenty twenty-one taxes. For property.
Or two properties. Okay, do we have any questions from council members?
Council President, can we, can we group those? Are we allowed to group one seventy-three to one seventy-six? They're all kind of the same topic. Is that allowed?
Of course, we can group. You know, typically there's.
Dave's nodding.
Not, not at this point though. You know, sometimes there's dissension from certain council members. So we don't assume that we can group things.
So can we make a motion to group and see if there's any?
Before that motion is made, I believe that the administration wanted to pull one seventy-six. Is that correct, Director West?
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, so one seventy-six is stricken?
Yes, so the motion, so the motion would be for one seventy-three through one seventy-five and then we'll need a motion to withdraw one seventy-six.
So, Council President, if I may respond to Councilman McKenna's question. At any point, the Council President, if he so chooses, can group items as long as there's no objection from other members of council.
Okay.
Thank you.
So first, let's have a, a motion to withdraw one seventy-six dash twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 No abstentions? Okay, one seventy-six dash twenty-one is now withdrawn. And now I'll entertain a motion to group one, what is it, one seventy?
Three.
Seventy-three to one seventy.
Five. Council President, you wouldn't need a motion to do that. It simply by your action will be enough to group them for vote.
Alright, so we are on one seventy-three to one seventy-five. Can I get a motion in a second to adopt those resolutions?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those, those in favor, say aye. Any oppositions or abstentions? Okay, those three resolutions are approved. Okay, one seventy-seven dash twenty-one.
One seventy-seven twenty-one, authorizing approval to apply and accept the twenty twenty-one New Jersey Division of Highway Traffic Safety Grant.
Okay, any questions from council members? Hearing and seeing none, can we have a motion in a second?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, the resolution is approved.
Resolution one seventy-eight twenty-one, authorizing the approval to apply and accept. A New Jersey Department of Highway Traffic Safety Clicker Ticket Grant.
Questions from council members? I'll entertain a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions?
Resolution one seventy-nine twenty-one, authorizing a one-year renewal with ShotSpotter for a gunfire detection system.
Any questions from council members? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition or abstentions? Resolution is approved.
Resolution one eighty twenty-one, designating Reboth Christian Church as redevelopment for the redevelopment of certain properties within the city of Plainfield.
How did you say that, man?
It's Rehoboth.
Someone said it quick enough, nobody noticed that I.
I, I heard Rehoboth quite a, quite a bit.
Just for the sake of it, can you read it again?
Designating Rehoboth Christian Church as redevelopment.
There we go.
Thank you.
From council, questions, but.
I have a question. Um, this property that they're looking to redevelop, would that then become tax exempt? Um, how much taxes are we getting on these properties currently? Do we know?
No, Councilwoman, I do not know the answer to what we're currently getting on the property. At this point, Rehoboth Church owns the property. And they've gotten site plan approval from the planning board to develop the property as their church. And because they're in a redevelopment area, we're requiring them to enter into a redevelopment agreement with the city for the property. Thank you.
Further questions?
Director Jackson, I, I was requesting something. Do you remember what I was requesting? When we spoke. Last week?
No, I don't remember.
Okay.
You can't remember either?
Yes, yes, I can. About where they were, what before, prior?
Oh, where were they prior? Okay, yes. I did forget that. I will get that and the prior taxes and send it to council.
Thank you.
Okay, you did ask me that question. Okay.
Further questions? Okay, is there a motion in a second?
Moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition or abstentions? The resolution is approved.
Resolution one eighty-one twenty-one, supporting participation in the Main Street New Jersey Program.
Okay, any questions from council members? Seeing and hearing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? The resolution was approved.
Resolution one eighty-two twenty-one, authorizing the award of a professional services contract to Pinoni Associates.
Any questions from council members? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposition or abstentions?
No.
Okay, there's no opposition by Councilman McKenna. And resolution is approved.
Everyone, of course. Resolution one eighty-three twenty-one, authorizing Union County Improvement Authority to develop a renewable energy program.
Any questions from council members?
I, I just have one question. The way, the way that I read this is that this was an outsourced program that they're now insourcing. And, and that's really just the change is that they need a resolution that we authorize to stick with the program while they do it in-house.
That's correct.
Thanks.
Further questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? The resolution is approved.
Resolution one eighty-four twenty-one, authorizing a approval for street opening at three fourteen Mansion Place.
Okay, questions from council members? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? The resolution is approved.
Resolution one eighty-five twenty-one, approving the State of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Program.
Okay, questions from council members? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition or abstentions? The resolution is approved.
Resolution one eighty-six twenty-one, authorizing the award of a contract to Your Way Construction.
Questions from council members? I'll entertain a motion in a second.
No move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition or abstentions? The resolution is approved.
Resolution one eighty-seven twenty-one authorizing approval to enter into an agreement between the city of Plainfield. The County of Union for the fireworks display at Cedar Brook Park.
Questions?
I just have a comment. Um, I'm glad to see um that we're doing the fireworks this year. Um, while they look a little different than they have in the past, um, I think it's one sign of a return to normalcy. And I think that it's great. So thank you to Public Works and Recreation for making this happen.
You're welcome, Councilwoman. Further?
I have, I have a quick question, Council President. Is, is this just for the, the, that cost is just for the operation of the drive-in or the actual fireworks? Cause we voted on the fireworks.
This is, this is for the county, the all police officers, et cetera, and the barn for the cleanup.
Okay, so this is operations cost only, not fireworks?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
No move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? The resolution is approved. If I read one eighty-eight dash twenty-one? No, no.
Give me a.
Resolution one eighty-eight twenty-one uh awarding a contract. Uh, in the amount of four thousand, two hundred fifty to Development Directions LLC.
Questions from council members? I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Moved.
Again.
Any opposition or abstentions? I'm so, I'm sorry, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Hearing and seeing none, this resolution is approved. All right, new items, uh, we have a, a new item offering condolences to the family of Michael Price. Now the motion to add that to the agenda.
Some would.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, it's now added to the agenda. Uh, and now any questions or comments regarding that resolution? Okay, do we have a motion in a second?
Some would.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition or abstentions? The resolution is now approved. Okay, we now come to ordinances on first reading, or please read MC twenty twenty-one nineteen by title.
MC twenty twenty-one nineteen is an ordinance granting Title Thirty-nine jurisdiction. To the city of Plainfield over roads and parking lots at the Muhlenberg Medical Arts Conference.
Okay, any questions from council members?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Um, Mr. Marcello, if you don't mind, just explaining what Title Jur, Title Thirty-nine jurisdiction is. Um, I know we have it pretty regularly and um, as we have new developments, we seem to have it a lot more. But there always seems to be some confusion about what exactly uh Title Thirty-nine jurisdiction entails and what it means.
Sure, uh, Title Thirty-nine is the uh traffic code for the state of New Jersey. And this uh ordinance allows our police department to enforce traffic laws on those specific streets.
So this is more of a parking lot, but they can enforce traffic laws within the parking lot?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? I'm now entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
So moved. Second.
We're gonna have a roll call.
Council Members Davis?
Yes.
McKenna?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills Ransom?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
Vice President Good?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
That is unanimous, this ordinance has been, been introduced on first reading.
Okay, thank you. We now move to public comment. A, a total of sixty minutes will be allocated for our public comment to be presented this evening. Each speaker will be allowed uh three minutes. Uh, if you wish to be heard, hit the hand icon to be recognized or be unmuted. Name and address for the record. The floor is now. Ms. Coons, name and, name and address for the record. Welcome.
Sure, good evening, everyone. Sharice Coons, one forty-one McKinley Place. Uh, first off, I'd like to thank those folks who came out to do a cleanup on McKinley Place. It is much appreciated. You know, I did come out to the council meeting uh to talk about the garbage that was on. Uh, the opposite uh side of the street from my home and just wanted to thank those folks who came out to um do the cleanup. And I did promise them that if they decided to do a cleanup again, that I would cook them breakfast. So please make sure that they let me know ahead of time and I'll make sure that I do that. Um, yeah, um, also, um, I would like to um just remind uh Ms. Burgess. About my four-way stop sign on the corner of Second and Johnston Avenue. Um, it is getting to be the summertime and it seems that uh the traffic speed, you know, the speed of the cars coming down East Second Street. Um, gets a little faster during the summer. So, you know, I just hope that you're still looking into uh the four-way stop sign at the corner of Second and Johnston Avenue. Thank you guys so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. See who we have next.
There is no one else with their hand raised.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion in a second to close public comment.
No move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, public comment is now closed. Uh, the, Director Burgess, did, did you have any follow-up comment that you wanted to offer regarding uh the stop sign?
Yes, absolutely. Um, myself, Director Dabney and uh Fire Director Childress. Uh, were recently in that area as well as uh another area that we were looking at for a four-way stop. We've also um done some study in that area. We added some additional uh twenty-five mile speed signs in that area. So it, it is looking good that that may possibly be a location where a sign will be placed. But we have been working on it over the course of the past two months.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. Just one quick question, President. I, I, I believe is uh, is this Mr. Garts's last week with the city?
Let's hear about that.
There's a next week.
May nineteenth, yeah, next week.
Next week. Well, you know what? We won't have another council meeting, so let me just wish you the best and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, uh, did I hear a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting?
Again, moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all.
Have a good night.
Good night.